Commentary when we have to check with the press before we start.
Stan.
Okay, we'll call our meeting to order. Jerry didn't say anything, so I'm sure he's just on his way. So, to lead us off, would everyone please stand and try and face the flag and join us in the pledge?
One nation, unified, in the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands, one nation underground. In whose home the liberty is sworn.
Okay, we have a change on new business one, a discussion on purchase of truck for snowplowing. We're gonna pull that item because we're not ready for any discussion or any continuance of that at this time. Is there anything else that anyone's aware of that we need to add or amend?
No, I did ask Jake, you did get a handout. This just tells you who's volunteers and who's hired by the district. The one in your packet makes it look like there's a lot of coaches. I thought it was important for you to see that the majority of them are volunteers. You still have to go through the same background checks and things like that, but make sure that you reference that sheet.
Question on the discussion part, I mean, it's only a discussion, why are we pulling it?
Because the government bid didn't come, I don't have any information on what a truck would even cost. So until we have that, Dave, there's nothing to talk about. We don't have any numbers or anything.
Would they be by like a newer used truck, were we going through Andy or?
No, well, we have three options that they'll be presenting, and it came through facilities. It'll be the purchase of a new truck, not, there's nothing in the budget for it. And then the second one would be a used truck through his facilities budget instead of doing preventative maintenance. Or three, waiting till July 1, when it could be built into the budget.
Sounds like a discussion already. I'm just saying it's no vote.
It came out of facilities, but because we don't have the information to give you, I don't know what we would talk about. But those are the three things I'm trying to gather information on, so that when we have the information, I could show you what a used truck would cost and what a new truck would cost and all of that. Because without the numbers, I don't know how we would discuss it.
You know, it does lend itself to some conversation. I wonder if we can back out and just, if nothing else, we can update them on the facilities conversation. Because very soon the snow will fly.
I always hate the, "We need to make a decision now, this is what we're against."
Yeah, yeah, and we were talking about getting bids and everything else. I'm not sure that we have any bid information, but we can discuss the philosophy just a little bit behind the meeting. So, can we just leave it at that?
Sure.
Yeah, I sent it out to the facilities group and they asked to have it removed. So, that's, so I'm sorry Dave's not here for that conversation, but.
And that's okay, it's just general conversation, Jerry can enter into it. We don't spend a lot of time on it. I think it's probably good just to see where that meeting went. Okay, needing our amendment, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown originally.
Like a motion?
On second.
Rob on the motion, Kurt on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Schedule presenters. We have two therapy dog presentations.
Yeah, we're gonna do that one first. Yeah, that would probably be easiest, though. And I'm not sure, do all the board members know Jamie Adamin? She's one of our fifth grade teachers. So why don't you introduce yourself first?
Yeah, so I'm Jamie Adamin, I teach fifth grade. This is my fourth year here. And I've had the opportunity of introducing my dog into my classroom as a therapy dog. So, yeah, today I'm gonna be talking a little bit about it and how it works in my classroom.
And I'm gonna pull up her presentation so you guys can follow along if you'd like. Do you wanna use her clicker?
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, you've got it, okay. That's what you just want to say. Yeah, there we go. You can take it from there, whatever you wanna do.
Okay, so, yeah, once again, I'm here to discuss with you a little more about what Kona does in my classroom and why she is here. Here's a quick little picture of her in front of our school building. To begin, I'm gonna start with a couple of facts about dogs. The first is, did you know that spending just a few minutes with a dog can lower anxiety and blood pressure and increase levels of serotonin and dopamine? Did you know that people performing stressful tasks do better when there's a dog around? Did you know that therapy dogs have been shown to be effective in easing depression for a variety of people, old and young, sick and healthy? And then the last one is, did you know that dogs can increase a person's social skills by forty percent? This is because people spend more time either talking to their dogs or about their dogs. And if you come into my classroom and ask any one of my students about the dog, they will talk your ear off. Even my shy ones. So here's a little bit about Kona. She's a lab mix, and she just turned two years old in September. My husband and I rescued her from the Werberie Humane Society when she was six months old. And anybody who is around her knows that she's super sweet and loves to be around everyone. And Ms. Keys, I don't know if you knew this, but she's a big biting fan. Some of the trainings and certifications that she had to get to become a therapy certified dog. We did all of our training through Rio Grande and Hastings. She had to take beginner obedience, and that was just her basic obedience. So that's gonna be, can she sit, can she lay down, can she walk on a loose leash? And then we moved into advanced obedience, and that's gonna be, she had to learn how to sit and stay for a long period of time and avoid treats on the floor and toys. After those two, we actually completed our K9 Good Citizen certification. And then we went into a dog training class, which taught her to, how to react in certain situations, whether it be loud noises or chaotic, you know, things going on in a room. And then her and I continued to, and each of these classes were seven weeks total, or each. And then we, her and I continued to train on our own. And we went to every pet friendly place you can think of within forty minutes. So I was driving my dog forty minutes just to spend, you know, half an hour in Petco in Werberie. So, and then we gracefully passed our therapy dog certification. And I also had to take an online course, which taught me how to appropriately lead my dog and if she was ever in a situation, how to get her out of a situation. So, those are her training and certifications that we had to go through. It took me about eight to nine months to get through all of this. The number one question I always get is, why is she here? And to be honest, there's a lot of reasons why she is here. And every day that I bring her to school, I'm finding more reasons why she is here and why she comes to school. The first reason, I find that it is very, very important that she gets my students very excited about coming to school and creates a welcoming atmosphere. I was told at Constance by one of my parents that this was the first year that her child doesn't cry every morning when coming to school. He loves coming to school, he loves seeing Kona. And it gets him here and it gets him in a happy mood about being at school. Another reason, or another reason why she's here, she's teaching my students how to be empathetic. They have to learn how to be kind to her and be gentle with her. And a lot of that is transferring over and how they treat each other. And then another one is, they create new learning experiences. One of my students had never pet a dog before, coming into my classroom in fifth grade. And a lot of them also have never had a pet before. So they're getting that experience of what it's like to have a pet. And it's just an experience that they're never gonna forget. You can, you know they're gonna be talking about this when they're older. I'm currently getting my masters through St. Mary's, and I have to do an action research project. And my action research project is talking about how dogs can help with mental health in the classroom. I dedicated my summer to researching about dogs and how they can improve the mental health of students, which I think is extremely important, especially nowadays. I have a, I'll go to the next one. Increased reading fluency is one of the big reasons that can also help with, that you can also help with in the classroom. There's, I'm doing a, it's called a Read With Me program that I am replicating. And so what it is, my lower fluency reading students actually get twenty minutes of reading with her each week. And according to research, it actually improves their reading fluency throughout the year. So I'm actually keeping data and keeping track of that right now. She calms nerves and reduces anxiety. I have a student who gets really, really high stress test anxiety. And he shows like physical signs of either tossing himself or pulling out his hair while he's testing. And I've noticed that when I move Kona by him and he can take a break and pet her, his anxiety signs actually disappear. So that's really cool to see, and I wish you guys could all see the difference that she makes. And obviously she makes students and staff healthy, happy. I have staff that come into my room after school every day just to see Kona. You know, teaching is a long, it can be a long stressful day, and all those days they come and they get their therapy time with Kona, and it's really fun to see. Please come visit us. She is usually here on Monday, Wednesdays, or Fridays if you're ever curious. I would love for you to all be able to experience what she does in my classroom. If I could all have you in on a day that she is here and on a day that she is not here, so you can compare the two days, it's actually a huge difference, just in the mood of my students and also the behaviors. I know Katie got to come and see us and she got to see what it was like. Obviously, the first couple of days of having her, it was extremely distracting. But they come to be, you know, it's not distracting anymore. She just kinda hangs out in our classroom, whether it's either sleeping in her bed or under their tables or being pet. So, please come, visit us, and thank you for supporting this awesome journey of having a therapy dog in our school.
Firstly, I haven't heard much about this, maybe I wasn't paying attention. We start talking about a therapy dog, and what was the origin of us beginning a program like this? Or where did this first start? Have we had a dog in school before this?
You know, it started with a lot of the information that came to us about the service dogs. And we had service dogs enter our schools last year. And so I think it just kind of opened up that environment that was so, for so long, no animals, no animals. You know, make sure you remove all your animals and things from the classroom. And so, there's just been a ton of research on what this can do. And so, it was approached, it started with the foundation, we were gonna look at something like a grant. They actually didn't end up going through with it because it really is her dog, her programming, all of that. And so, we still wanted to kind of move forward with it and just at least have a pilot program in place. And so, she and Ms. Chapeau both working on this pilot for us. And, you know, we'll look at the data when it's done, and we'll see if we see some results that we like and maybe we can expand the program. There's hurdles to it, and you all know that from when we talked about it last time. And I don't know what insurance companies and things like that are gonna do, you know, with those types of things. But we're really excited to see the end of the year data and see what she and Jennifer come up with.
What kind of data could we get from?
Well, it'd be interesting to see, you know, if you took the, and you're gonna be seeing some MCA scores, but you don't get fourth grade kids, the kids that were, what their scores were in fourth grade, the exact kids in fifth grade, was the growth margin bigger than what we thought it was gonna be? Some are students with some special needs, or maybe just even some anxiety things. You know, can the parents fill out a survey at the end and said, you know, fifth grade is typically, fifth and sixth can be a very stressful kind of transition kind of year? You know, what did they feel with a kid coming home, was that good? Also referral data. Yeah, so.
There's a lot of data. Yeah, I mean, there's such a big cookie that this covers and the different things that we can collect data on. Just a few of the things that I'm collecting right now is the reading fluency. I'm tracking attendance, is attendance affected on the days that she comes versus the days that she's not there? And then I have been taking, my kids take surveys, just like mental health questions such as, do your parents have to force you to come to school in the morning? I mean, just simple questions like that. And those are just kind of the three that I'm focusing on right now. But I mean, I continue.
We're also keeping track of, there are some negatives that go along with it. And so far, those aren't very large, but some people aren't dog people. You know, we've got those concerns too and those kinds of things. But we need to look at the pros versus the cons when this is done, and we'll be happy to report that all back to you. We're pretty excited actually about the data.
What is the statewide or nationwide therapy dog situation like? Are we cutting edge or?
You know, service dogs have been around for a long time. I think therapy dogs are newer. We are definitely one of the very few in the HBL. But I think as a state, it's becoming very commonplace.
Lakeville has a ton of therapy dogs, actually.
Right, but we are, we are one of the very few. It's, it's becoming the insurance issues that have been somewhat of the hurdles. Because it is an elective, it's not a service dog, which is required by law and law and typically an IEP, so.
And if Jamie, if Jamie were to take her dog into, let's say hospice care or hospital, the company that we've chosen, and we chose Pet Partners, actually covers her with a $2 million umbrella policy. Unfortunately, there is a clause to that, and most every single therapy dog training does, is that if you are actually bringing the dog to your workplace. So if I was not a principal and I was, let's say, working at, let's say Best Buy, and I volunteered my time in school, then my dog would come with that $2 million policy. Because we're in our workplace, that's a little bit different. And so that has to be covered under our, is what we decide is our homeowner's insurance.
So.
And Lakeville, it's very different. And Lakeville, it's very different because they're owned by the district.
We'll just, we need to table top first here. Yeah, from a practical standpoint, that would be one of my big issues. Dog bites child, and where's that coverage? Is the school liable for that, or is it the individual homeowner, in this case you, that's liable for that? I know that in some other things, a certificate of insurance is required.
We have that.
And so, that means your company says, yeah, we're okay here.
Yep. Yeah, we made sure we doubted all the eyes before we moved forward with this and talked exclusively to our, you had to produce a lot of information for me.
Seven meetings there, or whatever the number is.
No, actually, I'm sorry, Nora, I see her in the corner over here.
I was gonna answer Bob's question. There is a therapy dog on every floor of the residence halls in Georgetown. Where? Georgetown.
Anybody else, questions?
You were open last minute.
Oh, that's right. That's why.
Should we have in-depth therapy conversations?
Oh, this way.
He was, he had the same concern on the insurance piece with. Who owns it? All right.
We were asking for you, Bob, you weren't here.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I do have one thing to add, I did get a chance to go and see her classroom. And, because I was curious and just wanted to see what it looked like in the classroom. And I was shocked, and I talked to one of her students, and it was the sweetest thing. He, he told me that he really struggles in math time, but he goes, you know what? The dog comes to me every time during math. And his para agreed and said, it's amazing, that dog can sense. And to me, it was, I walked in the classroom, and you know what you expect when you walk into a classroom, especially a dog who loves people, is gonna come running up and expecting. That dog stayed until she was instructed to come over and, and say hello to me. And didn't jump, didn't, it was just amazing, she was calm. The kids were doing their thing, they were all on their computers. She would just lay and then walk over and lay with somebody else, and they, they just kept doing their thing. I mean, it was very calm.
It's not distracting.
No, it was very refreshing to see, and I think anybody who can get a chance to go see it, be worth, worth it.
And Katie, I think that's the same student who told me, Ms. Chapeau, she looks right into my eyes.
Yes, she told, he told me that too.
Right back into those eyes, and my heart is just happy.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, that was exactly what that child told me as well, so.
It's like a nice hole.
It was very neat though, because I'd be interested to see your behavior referrals on those days, just to see how that affects a couple of them, so, so, yeah.
Thank you. So next, Jen is gonna do an MCA presentation. You didn't do anything at the last meeting with this, did you?
No.
I'm just gonna let it, you got the clicker?
Perfect.
Can we change spots here?
Yeah.
Stand in front.
Okay, so just as a reminder, MCA, these are the state mandated tests. Parents can choose to opt their child out. However effective this past year, it no longer counts against us if they were to choose to opt them out of this. Whereas before, it was basically your population versus how many have been tested. Now it's how many actually took the test versus how well we did. And I just wanna remind you, these tests are done over the course of about two back-to-back days. In elementary, we kind of stretch it three days. Typically don't wanna stretch it any more than that. You catch a kid on a bad week, and you see that. So I just, I really want you, when you're looking at these things, I'm just prefacing that this is a small snapshot of what we have here in Cannon Falls. So, district overall in MCA math, this is a comparison for the last couple of years. You see that line is always going to mirror the state. So where the state comes in, and black is year 2016, seventeen and eighteen. And I know the reds are a little bit hard, but you can get the one that's on the far right. So Cannon Falls is right next to the state here. And so you can see where Cannon Falls is at compared to the state average. If you look at some area schools, it's really challenging to compare to a lot of area schools because they don't mirror exactly what we have here at Cannon Falls. But we do know that, while we don't like to draw a whole lot of attention on MCAs, we do know the state does. So naturally, this is, this is kind of what you get. So that is overall math. Remember, this is done in grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and then again in high school for math, which is eleventh grade. Our district overall in reading, so the same grades except not in eleventh grade, but in tenth grade, okay? You can see where the state falls as the average, where Cannon Falls is at. So reading is definitely an area, if we were to compare that to math, it would be more of a strength. So the far right column is where we currently stand as a district. Each of the building principals go over building specific.
What is your line again?
The line represents where Cannon Falls falls for that current year.
Because we're well above the state on that one.
Yep, we are well above the state. Okay? This is in science. Science is only taken in fifth grade, in eighth grade, and then once again when they're in high school, around tenth grade. Okay, so those three times. Again, the line represents all the across where Cannon Falls currently stands as effective as last year's scores, which are now published. And this, we just happen to be, and I've said this for the four years that I've been doing this, I know Ms. Fields was last year, but science is definitely an area that makes this science teacher proud. Because I have been in every single science classroom. It's phenomenal to see the stuff, and the work that's done in PLCs, which is where I kind of position myself as an assistant principal, is awesome. And not to mention where our fifth grade is. And remember, it's not just the fifth grade, right? It is the third grade teacher, the second grade teacher, the first grade teacher, who all have their own science standards, all the way throughout. This chart, I credit it to Tim, but as I've been doing this for the last few years, minus last year, although I helped Ms. Fields on this, it's becoming a lot of colors. But, if you're kind of into data like I am, force me. You kind of get into looking at this, so the color follows the students. So let's just say in 2016, that lilac color, they were third graders. In seventeen, they would've been fourth graders. In fifth grade, see how that kind of goes along? It's pretty, once you kind of figure it out. So this is where we look at the trend data. And PLCs are constantly diving and they're driving their PLC goals around what this looks like as it follows them. This is the most accurate information as a DAC, that I can track it from, from grade to grade as they go. Now, traditionally, they would say lots of things about the test per year. I know fifth grade in math is drastically different. If you look at last year's fourth graders, sixty-six point seven to fifty-eight point two, so that's kind of how it goes through, okay? So you see some change, you see whether it be ups or downs. That is gonna be that adolescent brain as well, I will tell you that, based on what they're bringing to the table for those three days.
Well, and what this doesn't show is how it follows the state as well. You know, this is just our students, this is very, we're, we're still so above the state average. Even though it may look like there's a drop, the state drop would be even more.
Right.
And so that's what I think she's trying to say.
And that's a natural curve that happens, and I was looking back even at presentations that I did my very first year, again, above the state average, which is to me, in my mind, that's our goal, right? Is to stay above where that's at, and.
So are those numbers the percentile then?
This is, thanks for asking, percentile proficient. So we would be at seventy percent are either proficient or exceeding.
Okay.
I was wondering that too.
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
So this just means it was actually a different MCA, it was the MCA two, so it does affect data a little bit.
The test changed.
Yep, and then when you're looking at reading, this is what you kind of see here. And I know only because I have a fifth grade teacher in here, this was a big, big PLC goal last year, was reading. So they solely focus on reading. That is a jump that, that means that was their focus, let's just be honest, because they were really hitting it hard. So we're really proud of the things we're doing. This to me is just a roadmap of what to do next. So, again, the goal is to stay above that state average, monitor where we're at within the area, and then build our PLC goals around that. This would be MCA science. This one gets a little bit more high-tech because it doesn't follow by year by year because the test is only fifth, eighth grade, fifth, eighth, and tenth. So if you were to pick in 2014, these fifth graders, when they took it next was at sixty-two, and then of course they'll follow, follow in suit as well. Kind of match those colors up. That one's really hard, unless your sign gets her. So building-wide goals. Every year I tell my staff, we want to increase by five percent. And I've told my staff what we had for last year's goals. So basically what this is, is that we want a five percent increase. And we achieved that, I believe, in all of our areas in the elementary last year from last year to this year. And then we're just making sure we're providing four more hours of instruction during this school year that will assist staff in integration of digital technologies, which is that one-hour staff development after school. Middle school, high school, Tim's not here to speak to this, but he, again, is having a goal for his building to utilize the best practice in their one hour. They want to increase some of the assessments by two percent, and then offer the eight hours of staff development, just like the elementary. This is where our student learning is centered, and I do remember seeing this last year. This is something that Mr. Hodges and myself kind of created. Just what this looks like to increase student learning. And it's all the different stakeholders that are part of the process. Whether that be looking and making sure that our grading and reporting is where it needs to be. Building-wide literacy effectiveness, one of John Hattie's things, and just the PLC process and making sure we're doing that with fidelity. Questions? I know that's a lot of information kind of thrown at you.
Because some things, our students continue to just do really amazing things, and our teachers are really, you never wanna focus just on MCAs, but the end result is something we can all be really, really proud of, to be that far above the state. And I don't know if you heard, I didn't bring the data in, but obviously Minnesota came in first in ACT scores across the entire nation. And someone sitting here that's gonna be either taking the ACT or maybe already have taken it. Cannon Falls students, again, above even the state line, which is remarkable. When the state is coming in first and Cannon Falls kids are coming in even above that, it's truly remarkable. Our kids are just testing well, which isn't our, our goal. We don't want them to necessarily test well, but they are getting the information they need. So we're really, we're really proud of that.
And one thing, just being a part of the PLC process now in both buildings, the, the one thing that I value the most is that questions are continuing to be questioned, and it just doesn't stop. So if, you know, a lot of our PLCs are doing test item analysis. Okay, everyone on this assessment got this one wrong, why? It's not just flying through stuff to fly through stuff, it's really being analyzed, and I respect that about our PLC process. It's something to be proud of as a school teacher.
Jen, you mentioned that, you know, the adolescent brain as they're growing. You know, you look at reading and it seems to keep going up and up, and they do well year by year. And then like in the math and the science, you see that drop. That's consistent across the board, the way it sounds within everybody. Why is that? What do you see, the analytical brain just changes, they don't comprehend it?
That is a million dollar question, and I think if Beth and I had answers to that.
Are some of them out of math for a while, and they just kind of forget, or is that?
I don't think it's necessarily that, it's the alignment of how they learn it. We've done some adjustments. We used to go algebra one, geometry, algebra two. Now we've learned that, you know, algebra one, algebra two, then hop over, some advanced math. You know, get that in them as soon as they can. If an eighth grader, Emma was one of those students that took algebra one in eighth grade, they get more math in before the test. But you gotta remember, some of the kids didn't get that, so they are going to have less math knowledge. But you gotta remember, some of the kids didn't get that, so they are going to have less math knowledge, like in 11th grade.
And you know, when you, when you look at the foundation of a child's learning, right? It starts with their parents' lab reading, right? So the foundation is going to be reading, that's something they're seeing all the time. When their brain is ready for math to tackle that is very different. I could be ready for geometry as a sixth grader versus, no offense, maybe Beth isn't until she's 11th grader. Do you know what I mean? No, like.
Nice example.
But you know, like I think that that, in reading, it's like if those building blocks are there, that's going to transpire naturally. Whereas I think math is just.
The other example that we've talked about as LACIS' administrative team is, you know, the students in the room will tell you that no matter what class you're in, the teacher's focus is always on English and reading. And whether it's science class, you're making sure you're understanding the vocabulary words and things like that. So you're almost getting that double dose, that triple dose of reading. Where if you're sitting in social studies class, you're not getting that double dose of math. It, it just might be one more example. Even in science class, you know, when you look at your notebooks, even in chemistry, and I open that up and I see all of these vocab words, not only are they learning chemistry, they're, again, just increasing their vocabulary and things. So I think that's why you see the state do that. I think that's why you see Cannon Falls do that. But getting back to the science thing, we've had people call us, no one could quite understand why our science scores are as, as high as they are. And you saw that compared to all the other schools around us. Science is just a really strong strength. But you go down the elementary, there's a commitment to science. You know, in some districts, it's like, well, we fit social studies and science in when we can. You know, we hope to have it on day one or day three. You know, I think in our district, we make a strong commitment to it and I think that really makes a big difference.
What, what's the validity to the MCAs when it comes to the Department of Education or something like that? So we get nice scores. What happens if we get poor scores? Is there, is there a, is this our report card from the?
They will step in.
Oh, oh, they will, absolutely. They want to stay consistent. So it's, would be over a few years of time that they're consistently seeing that low. And they will also track it by grade, just like you saw in those, just to see if there's anything that is. We are far from that, so that's a good thing. But there, I mean, I, you know, we have a teacher who's from Nevada sharing scores with where her kids are at, you know, and how that compares to our MCAs. I mean, she's looking at 2% proficient. And so it's hard to compare to, but they'll step in when they feel it's needed. And I, I don't know what that cutoff line is.
The newspaper, like the TRIB, sometimes has this list of, of participants, if you will, all the schools. It would appear that some are put on notice if they get below a certain point.
Yep, that's exactly what we're talking about.
And what, what's the outcome for those schools?
You're put on an improvement plan.
Yep. And so then they will come in, they will look at your PLC process, they will look at, you know, just what your overall building and district goals and how that's mirroring the fidelity of the test and how long, you know, they're just, they really analyze how long you're taking the test. Are you following the, you know?
They do bring in a lot of other scores too. They will look at your MMR scores, which really you need to look at our, our student, our special education population, those scores, was that impactful? I mean, there's a lot of other things that they look at, so.
Just, you know, MCAs, I guess, aren't new, but they have been around for 10 years, I suppose.
Oh, wow.
Even more than that?
Oh, yeah, I've been here 18 years and we did that when I taught fifth grade, so.
I sometimes can sense, I feel like, that some educators, it's a, I wouldn't say a disruption, but you take time out of your, of your class.
And, and, and you know, you keep in mind too, these MCAs are for, and they keep changing the window of time, right? So you're looking at the third grade and where they're at June 2nd, right? Yet you're giving the test in March. Who's talking about why that's not best, you know what I mean? Because look at all that time that, that content's not. So then we're kind of rushing some of the content and then revisiting some of the content and.
Well, maybe the students in the room. Do you have any comments on the MCAs, how much you love them and how much you can't wait for them? Abby, you must love the MCAs.
Oh, yeah.
It's a long day of testing, isn't it?
It really is. And you know, every test is, you know, we, in this district, we go a week to it. So you're gone one day, you come back and you test. And we, we don't like to test for longer than an hour at a time, which I think is wonderful. My old district, it was you're in there for the whole time and you finish. So I think we're doing a lot of the, the right things to make sure we have a testing atmosphere that helps.
Is it, is it possible that, that you can play to the test, if you know what I mean?
Sure. They give you, I mean, ultimately, our PLCs are surrounded by standards focus, okay? Now, the questions are built right off of the standards. So if you're hitting your standards the way that you should, people could argue that, you know, you're teaching to the test. And we've had conversations about that. Ultimately, it's not just the test that we're teaching, right? We're trying to prepare citizens to leave Cannon Falls and be successful and leave the next grade level. But I also would argue, I mean, we can't see what's on the test. It's kind of challenging because we want them to match up what their score is with how they're doing in school, right? I mean, student's not going to have an A in reading and have drastically failed the MCAs. Does that make sense? So if we're assessing.
I think the other thing you have to remember is there's some kids that just don't want to take these. And so they sit there and they just don't answer any questions or are they just yes?
Yep, and last year, and we mentioned.
But those scores fall on us, you know.
Mrs. Fields had mentioned that last year. And we had some students who took the test in under six minutes. I mean, it was.
You can't do it that fast.
So they can opt out, you said?
Sure.
A parent can.
What are our percentages of opting out relative to state, let's say?
Um, oh, very few compared to the state. The state average, I mean, I, I want to say we are under maybe two handfuls of students, grades three through 11, that have opted out. And I would say over half of them were due to medical. It's a couple of concussions, yep. But you know, you look at, and when you look at the state report card, if you ever have, it'll tell you how many were tested. And when you have a few different windows up comparing districts, you would drastically see that that is double and triple in most districts. And I, and I do believe that there are some that pride themselves on offering the opt-out to a lot of students because now it doesn't count against you, whereas it used to. So.
So if they opt out, that doesn't affect your percentage?
It used to.
It, it used to.
It did, but it doesn't anymore, right?
Doesn't anymore. And last year was the first year of that, so.
Any questions for Jen?
One more?
At our tech meeting, we were talking about something other than testing for evaluating our students. Did I hear that right? And you were going to have something about it at this meeting, I thought.
Nope, that was Tim. And he was doing something in regards to the grading policies for middle school.
He's presenting in November for you.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. He's on November 13th.
Although, that's a good word.
Okay, public input. If anyone has anything they would like to speak to the district about or the school board about, now is your, now is your chance. Okay, we'll be gone. Consideration to approve the finance report. Mr. Davison?
Yep. So just looking at page three in the packet. And again, just the brief summary of what's kind of going on. Look at essentially cash flow. Two bank accounts, we have funds in, merchants banking, community resource, community resource being our bank of record for the next five years. We also have an account held at merchants for HSA and then for additional, maybe over collateral, we might add community resource. So in all, $2.59 in cash in the banks currently. Really nothing outstanding in the next few months of cash flow. The big thing to recognize or realize is that these cash-wise, they have, necessarily fund balance-wise, they all, all the time, but cash-wise, the school is in pretty good shape to make sure we're covering our obligations, whether it be payroll, debt service or otherwise. Couple of big numbers to note that are coming up. We don't have the information from the counties yet, but the first and second payments or distributions of the, the second half of your tax receipts will be coming in the end of October, beginning of November. I would expect to see from the county either tomorrow or Wednesday, the actual data for that. But a pretty good close estimate of what we should be seeing in each of those payments. Generally what happens when you receive our county payments is you'll see a decrease of the ideas payment from the state of Minnesota. That's kind of offset. I just kind of, real quick, your county payments are essentially your, your levies or your taxes. Whereas you'll see from the state, the ideas is more of your aid. Really, you know, kind of short and sweet kind of summary of what's going on right now is cash flow is our goal. Next, a board member will give audit presentation. I have a beneficiary board finished up on the end of Christmas of the year 18. And then subsequent financial reports, we'll go back to seeing more, more data that's related to what's going on. But that's what we have for you right now. And if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
The, the county tax revenue that we get, you just said is, is reduced, ideas money gets reduced proportionately?
Yeah, so it has been, we've had to do a balancing act to help kind of level out your cash flow. So while we do see an increase in our county receipts, generally is a reduction in the, from the state. All that does is delay the payment and kind of equalize the aid throughout the year. So during these periods and then in the May-June period, we get the other tax receipts, you'll see the ideas or the state aid payments reduced to reflect the addition for the other county, the levying proceeds.
Are we storing the weight independent?
No, we're, we're sixty, sorry, 90 cents, like we were forty.
Okay.
So what, you know, I was talking about is generally we, we receive 90% of our current year aid in the current year, 10% of the following, to kind of even out. And that's more so that the state can have time to adjust branches and maybe student count, meals served data as it comes in to balance it off, so the, the school is responding for the, the current year.
Other questions? Comments? If not, they'd look for a motion to approve the finance report or something.
I'll make one.
Motion by Jerry.
Second.
Second by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Jerry? Consent agenda, items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. If one of board members wants to discuss any particular item, it can be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. If that's what we got.
That's a different, that's a line item.
Okay.
I did want to recognize the Rosemont Guitar Shop, the Lions Club and Gemini again for their constant, just remarkable support of our school. So just a special thanks to those three companies.
Take a look and when you're ready to approve, if that's the case.
I'll make a motion if you can make that.
Ladies on the motion, Brenda on the second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Jerry? Nothing under old business, under new business, purchase of a truck for snow plowing. Jerry, before you got here, we were going to take that off because we're really not, I guess, in the mood for information on the truck for snow plowing.
Yeah, I don't think we're in a position to have an open discussion, if we get a little more information.
We'd like to still.
I thought it was okay to just remove some of the discussion because when last, when last we talked about it, we were kind of on, under, under Dave's recommendation, maybe we look at other options for snow, independent?
I guess, I'm just curious, I mean, the last conversation was even purchase something. And historically, we will typically see something come up saying, these are options to purchase. And then that purchase option might not even be there anymore. So I thought at this point, do we discuss even purchasing? You know, it's only a discussion, a little voting there. So I thought this, it was on here, let's leave it on to say, where's, where are we thinking at? Is, is Dave doing the research or is Andy doing the research?
I, I have to do that. You know, it's not in the budget at all. And so my recommendation to the facilities committee is going to be and continues to be July 1. There was a lot of discussion about that. So we're just doing our due diligence and looking what that is. But it would take a drastic change in the budget, which, you know, we just have to see how those things go. But we, we did have great conversation and the facility committee is going to meet again. I think we had it narrowed down to three options, looking at leasing something new for five years. You know, bringing that individual year, we cost down because we've had some great success with leasing. And then a used version. The problem with that is you lose a lot of warranties and things like that. So we're getting some data and research on that. Some of that has come in. We're using SSC as our bidding because they hold the government's contracts. And so what's nice about that is you get hundreds of people that bid on it because it's a government contract. And then the third option is waiting till after July 1. One thing that has been updated since our facility meeting is there's been a lot of reference in, look at all the money we've saved in snow removal. And when we had Josh put together what we've really saved, this would be the first year of true savings because we haven't bought anything as far as equipment goes. And so when you start looking at those things, there's a little bit of savings, but how do you ever know how much snow we would have gotten? What would we have spent? But for the most part, because we've had those lease payments in for the trucks, this is the first year of true savings. And so the facility committee hasn't had that update yet. We will, we will present that at the next, next time we need. So I think we've narrowed it down to those three options. I think it was some really great conversation. I think leasing could be a great possibility. But, you know, I would want to see that information first. Adjusting a budget item that large in the middle of the year is, is tough to do. I understand it's nice to have a backup, but wouldn't it be great to have a backup? I'd love to have a backup, you know, for everything. We just don't know, the, the dishwasher at the elementary, do you have a backup sitting waiting when it die? You know, I mean, we'll just have to see how things go.
So with that, are we, are we discussing it because maybe for next year as a, as a plan?
Possibly.
And not for this year then? Is that what we're, we're doing? I, I do have one question with the whole thing, and Dave's not here, but is it a safety issue that things aren't being salted? Or are they getting salted safely, appropriately out there? That's the question I had with everything, you know?
We have availability to purchase that. People will come in and sand and salt. Or in his budget, he does have a line item for a new sander-salter. So we actually aren't talking about that. We're talking about the truck.
Yeah.
Currently, he's using a sander-salter that's just far too small. It's great for sidewalks, but it's not really designed for parking lots. So he is looking at something bigger, no matter what.
So that, not an issue.
That piece is built into his budget.
Okay.
I think one of the issues for me when Dave was here, and I'm not going to throw him under the bus, but it was one of those things, I, I wasn't sure why we were talking about bidding. And I thought, is that a, is that a real option that we're discussing at this late point? And, and so, you know, I think he went out for bids, but.
He did, he looked at unused ones.
We asked him just to see.
Right.
So, you know, and he did mention at the facilities about, about his ability to probably buy a, a mounted sander-salter for, for this truck. But he was just concerned that maybe that truck wouldn't last much longer. And it isn't that, it's ancient, but it's 2003, 2004, somewhere in there. His comment was, you know, if this happens at 3:00 AM and this thing breaks down and we're in the middle of a, a major event, there's nowhere else to go. And I, he said, I certainly like something that would be available to us and then that one could be our backup. But, but still, I was, I was confused about looking for snow removal bids. But I think he was just throwing us out to show the relativity of how much it costs us.
Trying to have everything so that, sometimes I think we get into conversations and we just don't have enough background knowledge. It was nice that that bidding done, so we knew that where that cost would be if we wanted to contract it out again. So I don't think, I don't think that's a bad thing.
And we'd ask him to, to get the cost, what is the cost of? They never knew if that was a, a real possibility for us or if it was just one of the options in front of us at the time, but.
So where do we sit with it right now? Are we just looking at moving forward that this is something we're going to look at down the road for next year's budget? Or are we still, I guess I'm confused at that point.
Me too.
I think we need to have another facility meeting. I, Josh agrees with me, like, we can't build it in for this year. We don't have a way to put it in the budget, so.
So is that, do we continue to proceed with it then? Or do we as, as a board look at and say, do we think we should go out and consider going out for something? Are we willing to say, look, let's go ahead and purchase something this year even though it's not in the budget? I mean, if it's something as a board, we agree that we probably shouldn't do that. Do we not worry about it anymore at this point? Or have we decided that we're going to go ahead and even though it's not in the budget, we decide to go forward with it for this year yet? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and I think once we have that information, you may say, we give you the authority. If for some reason that truck breaks down, we approve you to move that day with a purchase, but not until the truck does break down. I think the truck is going to be fine. We've had it serviced and they all believe that it will get through the winter just fine. I wish we had a crystal ball. If there's one area that every superintendent, every school board deals with is this snow removal. Are we? Are we going to get 20 inches this year? Are we going to get 50? Are we going to have one snow day of 20, you know? It's just crazy that way.
Now, I've heard, and this might just be me still learning, but I've heard a couple times you talk about preventative maintenance money. What is that for out of the facilities? Like, what, what would this, if this truck would break down, would that, would replacing it, would that qualify?
That's for our top HVAC units and things of that sort.
For all the new mechanical equipment that we've spent money on the last number of years.
Instead of hiring someone, that maintenance person that does those things, we've decided to look at contracting that out in a preventative maintenance kind of way. So the money is designated for that. That's what you've seen in that five-year plan?
Yeah. I was just curious.
Yeah, it's a great question.
I just want to, you know...
It's two different items.
The term PM is, is not preventative maintenance has not been with us for more than a year and a half or so. And I'm still sketchy like you are in just what it is and what it's...
What it would cover. What, yes, what it gets used for.
You laugh, so you know?
Well, I was in military, we had PM, I mean, we PMed every day. You wake up, you PM every vehicle every morning. It's an inspection. It's to try and catch things before they become more costly. I'm not going to say that, and, and you know, it's not going to say that it's going to stop more costs. It's just you catch them sooner so you don't have the problems where it breaks and now it's a $100,000 fix versus fixing it when it's a $20,000 fix. But it's still working fine. Why would we put $20,000 into it?
It's nice to have it designated there.
Oh, absolutely. I was just curious about it.
And we've had condensers go and we've had other issues. So it's been nice to have that designated there, but...
So have we used our preventative maintenance or are we in the process of using it when we begin our PM?
We're early in the year, but yes, they've tapped into, you know, they're buying filters and things like that that would be coded out of them, uh, PM. There has been some fan and motors that have had to be replaced depending where Josh decides to, to code that. It could go under PM if we needed to, but they have used that, that funds every year. There hasn't been extra left over, so...
Yes, for the snow plowing truck. I know we had a discussion, we went out for bids and everything, and that was just discussion as far as I remember. Have we decided that, and I think you brought this up, uh, going out for bid and possibly turning it back over to someone else? Are we for sure doing it in-house no matter what? And this is, or are we going back to, maybe we don't want to do it in-house? Maybe we want to change the parameters a bit to say, hey, and then over six inches, we contract that with, I don't know.
Like I said, the savings, this is the first year where we're having true, true savings. So I would think if we're even, yes, it's in-house. Josh, isn't that correct the way we've been told?
We're all going to ask, well, it's going to sit in the truck and do that two in the morning.
Well, and then we talked about, about some seats and talking about equipment breakage and all that. So I thought one of the, the basic questions was, do we want to keep this in-house? And I don't think it was really ever answered. We, we got bids and we saw some pricing, but doesn't matter what pricing is, if we, if we can't do it or if we can, what will our cost be? So I almost thought this was a second question. First one is, we are keeping it in-house.
I think the problem was is that I was surprised that this question even came up. Dave brought it forward after the budget had already been set. So to answer your question, the budget is set with it being done in-house this year. That is the answer to that.
Right.
The, the, the next question is, does this conversation need to come up again in March when you're setting your budget for the following year?
And that's where I thought that was at. So to discuss this means that that discussion should have already taken place, that we will keep it for at least two more years in-house.
And it might be, there really didn't need to be a discussion because the budget was built around the decision to have it in-house. So I, I didn't, you know...
For this year, but this truck's for next year.
I think it was to raise awareness that we might want to really think seriously about this for next year.
Right.
Otherwise, we're going to have to spend more money on the equipment.
Doing it in, thank you. Doing it in the district with overtime hours and equipment costs, whatever.
Yeah.
Versus some outside source do it for us. So some members had, Josh, I'll put together...
And I think if it was strictly financially and, um, we're, by their own doing it in-house.
But it can be close. I mean, when you're buying equipment.
Yep.
Well, that's, I guess to me, that was the first decision that should be made. And then this is, this would be the next depending on the first one. If we say we're committing to at least two years, like we did with the contract before, two or three-year contract. If we commit to that, then this should be the next count. That's how I was looking at it. That's where I kept going. But we're not sure if we're going to even do it in a year. I know this year we're committed, but in March next year, you guys say, you know what? We're going to take it out house. Well, we just bought a new truck.
Right.
What did we do that for? That, that's all I'm bringing to light.
Right.
But the truck isn't only still going to be used for a snow plow.
Okay.
I mean, the truck, everything else, if we went and, you would, you would have to sell the tractor and things. I mean, you would...
Well, I know, that's what I'm going, we'd sell a lot of equipment. But do we, yeah, I guess, do we need a new truck for what we would use it for or is the old truck still going to, yeah? That's a whole conversation, I know, but I just felt like this is kind of a second question.
I do have it on the March agenda. Lori already has it earmarked for March, um, so that when we're looking at those conversations and maybe even have to move it up to February, but right now it's earmarked for March, um, just so that, because Josh would put in, you know, $60,000 for snow removal and then look at what the equipment brings, what we could sell or not sell, so... I didn't mean for it to be confusing. I think it came up, I was on, I did not know it was coming up either. Dave just kind of brought it up and it hit me too, so... Dave would have been here tonight. I didn't realize we were going, I told him we weren't going to have this conversation. So I apologize for that. Dave would have been here.
Good conversation.
What he wanted was just to generate this.
It's generated.
Nothing's changed, so that's good.
That's right.
Okay, moving on. Consideration to approve the 18, 19 winter assistant coaches. You have the list of folks here.
Now, please use that one. The one I've got up is just a, but the one I took us shows you the, the people that are volunteers, et cetera. Jake's here.
Any, any comment here? Yeah, you see, a lot of these are volunteer. The boys' basketball, to be determined, is posted internally through tomorrow. So we'll have a name soon for that one. Girls' basketball, that is their staff, except looking at possibly getting a part-time coach for that to-be-determined, uh, who would help a seventh grade in the event that that coach can't be a full-time coach. Wrestling, you see a whole bunch of volunteers. There's one that will be paid with mat rass money. That'll be a junior high coach who did that last year. Robotics, um, I actually left that up. Both those robotics coaches are volunteers. And then down at speech, uh, the second assistant there is based on numbers. So the last couple of years, we've had to hire a second assistant or a, a second assistant, plus we have two head coaches, um, just based on, because of the number that we have, so... Another reminder on boys' basketball, we have a C squad. And we do, uh, district currently does not pay C squad coaches, so that very first name listed is actually funded, paid through fundraiser money as well. So you're paying three assistant basketball coaches, three assistant girls' basketball, uh, because they do not have a C squad, one assistant wrestling and one or two speech coaches.
I've never seen this many basketball coaches before. What's the to be announced?
So the two, uh, or the three volunteers, one has always been a volunteer with the varsity program.
Okay.
The two, um, so Aaron Winchell and Carrie Freebird are parents, I think, are just going to help out. Is that right, Dave?
If needed.
If needed.
They got to be on the list because you have to be background checked.
Yep.
And we currently have an opening, um, in one spot for boys' basketball, which is posted through tomorrow.
Brawling sessions, step down, so we got his open position. Okay.
We've, uh, two years ago, we struggled with the girls' basketball program numbers. It improved last year. How are we doing this year?
You know, we had two really low groups, which are seniors and juniors now. So we're looking at two, I'm hearing in the room, is a maybe a third senior playing and zero juniors. And then a whole bunch of sophomores, a whole bunch of freshmen, a whole bunch of eighth graders. So finally getting over that hump if we can get through really that junior class versus that zero. Actually, we had a transfer, um, who's a junior, she wants to play, but currently is in varsity ineligible to the state high school transfer role, which I'm actually going to appeal it because we likely won't have a JV team. So if she can't play JV, she can't play anywhere. So hopefully we'll be able to get her to play.
That'd be great.
So you said the speech coach is paid?
The first one is, the second one is dependent on numbers.
So it's two head coaches that we pay and a...
And assistant, yeah.
But they have almost 90 kids out for it.
We, we upped to that number again this year?
You know, we're, we're, hopefully.
We'll see on the 30th, right?
Right, yeah.
Will you get all those numbers? Could you shoot that up to the board so they know how many register for each one? I think that's good and appropriate, you guys can have.
Do we have just the one coach that's being paid out of, um, I guess, would it be boosters?
For mat rat or for wrestling?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And that's sent to the board over there.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
That's been to the...
I don't think so. I don't think we've gotten that done yet.
No.
Okay.
I haven't seen it yet.
Okay, any other questions? Now they'd look for a motion to approve the coaches.
I'll make the motion.
Kurt on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the 18, 19 seniority list.
This is very standard procedure.